Energy and Environment Special Meeting, actually, Mr. Smith, I think, was sworn in as a member of this committee so that we could have a quorum on this committee. It's Thursday, it's November the 20th. I'm Councilwoman Jan Perry here with Pro Tem and Councilwoman Wendy Grul. And I think what we can do is take Items Four and Five first, and then by the time we get those done, let's see, yeah, we might be where we need to be.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Rafael Pedra with the CLA's office. Item four relates to the revenue allocation agreement for the Sunshine Canyon landfill. What basically the MOU establishes is the capacity, review of the capacity, and how to divvy up the revenues associated with landfill.
Oh, great. Everything's clear now?
We have to figure out how to apply the franchise fees that apply both to the city and the county. So the MOU establishes that 70 percent of the revenues derived from there for franchise fee should be provided to the city, and 30 percent should be provided to the county. And that's based on the available capacity within the landfill. A study was done by an independent consultant, took a look at that, we agreed with it, the county agreed, and basically the county approved this agreement last week.
Did the supervisors actually vote on it?
Yes, they did, on the 12th of November.
We've also been joined by Mr. Smith. And I actually would be more than happy to defer to him if he had any questions or comment. We went a little bit out of order and did Four and Five first.
Four and Five are the easiest ones.
Yeah, those are the easy ones, then we'll go back to One and Two. Does she have any comments or questions?
I think what we're seeing here, for the most part today, is stuff that is the result of about a year of negotiations with the County of Los Angeles. Not always friendly, but we got it done. The result of some actions taken by BFI that kind of forced the City of LA to change its procedures, move forward on a number of things that we really didn't want to do, what we're kind of forced to do to survive. The establishment of the committee and everything to oversee it is very helpful, and this MOU is important in that it allows us to continue going forward enforcing the rules and regulations at the landfill. So I just think it's the right thing to do. The county's already passed this, and let's kind of move forward.
All right, great. Ms. Grul, any comments or questions now? All right, then, now that we have a quorum, because again, I think for the record, Mr. Smith was sworn in as a member of this committee today, so we'll be voting as the Energy and Environment Committee, not as a joint meeting.
Sure.
All right, so without objection, that'll be the order on Item Four.
Okay.
And then we can go to Item Five.
Sorry, Item Number Five is a report from the Planning Department, and this is in response to a motion from Mr. Smith. And this has to do with the memorandum of understanding between the city and the county, and the need to reconcile certain land use conditions.
Good afternoon, committee members. I'm Larry Friedman from the Planning Department. First of all, this is a housekeeping item. I just want to make sure that your draft agreement, the MOU, includes even-numbered as well as odd-numbered pages, because some of the initial distribution didn't have the even-numbered pages.
Uh-huh, yeah, I've got it.
All right, good. Motion was introduced back in June to prepare this joint MOU, and beginning last summer, we began a combined effort involving the City Planning Department, City Attorney, CLA, and representation from the council office, as well as our counterparts in LA County. The city prepared the first draft of this MOU, and then the city and county literally pored over every word and sentence, and met on several occasions to iron out this agreement. The purpose was to review and compare the land use conditions in the city's zone change ordinance, which was adopted in 1999, as well as the county's conditional use permit, which replaced a earlier conditional use permit, and reconcile those conditions where necessary that pertain to the combined operation of the landfill. We found that most of the regulatory aspects of the two sets of conditions to be very similar, if not identical. Most of the conditions that required reconciling are administrative in nature. The MOU only addresses those certain conditions where there is overlap, or where certain clarifications are needed, and/or where merging of the conditions would make sense for a combined landfill operation. What this agreement does not do, it does not amend the land use conditions that were adopted by either jurisdiction. Just to go over real quickly, we basically identified nine conditions, and the first one would involve the merging of the technical advisory committee for each jurisdiction into one jurisdiction. They would still meet twice a year, and they would be co-chaired by the respective directors of Department of City Planning, Department of Regional Planning. What's a little bit different about this merged TAC is that it would also include one member appointed by the Citizen Advisory Committee onto the Technical Advisory Committee.
Does the city and county still have equal authority under this merger?
Yes.
Okay.
There's also a merging of the community advisory committees. Instead of having two, there would be one. Both sets of conditions call for mitigation monitoring by independent air quality and environmental mitigation consultants, and that would be merged into one. Both conditions require a revegetation plan and fugitive dust plan, and that would be reviewed by the new joint local enforcement agency and the LA County Department of Public Works. As far as alternative fuel requirements, the strictest of the two conditions would apply as determined by the co-chairs of the TAC committee. The BFI would provide insurance and/or bond policies coverage that would afford the most coverage for both jurisdictions under this agreement for the combined landfill operation. The MOU also requires the review of the city's phasing requirements. There are basically three phases of the landfill operation, as well as the county's fill sequencing and capacity requirements in their condition number 18. And lastly, that the violations, if there are any violations, shall be subject to the fines as imposed by the county's conditional use requirements, regardless of whether the violation takes place in the city or county portion. There's a second part of this package that is submitted for your consideration. It's a draft resolution. And the resolution should be considered as part of the whole package. By that, I mean the package that includes the proposed code amendment for LEA enforcement, the revenue sharing agreement, and the alternatives to landfill matters that are on today's agenda, as well as the planning issues MOU. The resolution would essentially clarify one of the conditions in the city requirements that pertains to the Phase One operation for a minimum of four years. We're actually now into the fourth year of operation of Sunshine Canyon, which began in July of 2005. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Smith, any?
Yeah, it was actually, the requirement required five years of independent operation, so we're accelerating that. I think, and as I just said, Ms. Grul, I'm going to take a little bit of a local hit from some of my constituents who aren't happy with this, but I'm willing to do that because I think it does a number of things. First of all, it brings clarity to the Sunshine Canyon operators, in that we have combined issues, that everyone understands it very clear. Secondly, it gives us the ability to have enforcement that's very clear in the way we operate there. And I think this is well-designed to protect the city's interests in that, and BFI's interests as well. I think it's better for them to have one set of rules rather than two, to have one CAC, one TAC, rather than two. And I know they don't treat you very nicely, the CAC, so you've got only one person to beat you up instead of two. So in that respect, it's better for BFI. But overall, just from an operational point of view, this is the best solution. We are accelerating that fifth year. I think Ms. Goldberg said we're going to consider it as accomplished and move on to Phase Two, which is the right way to look at it. There are people in my district who would rather have had the five years, because that's what they fought for originally. But I've explained to them that this is better in the long run, that most importantly, we get the abilities of the city to enforce conditional uses that are very clear on the part of BFI, and that everybody knows what the rules are. And that's good for us, I think, and in the long run will be better for the operation of the landfill. And in that way, we can protect our citizens if there are violations, that we have the ability to go in and stop them, and their enforcement abilities are. So I think this is a well-thought-out plan, and I'm happy to see it go forward, because I think it resolves a lot of issues that many of us have been pulling our hair out for years. So I think it's a good solution to those problems.
Okay. Were there questions or comments? So without objection, that'll be the order on Item, that was Five, right?
Item Number Five, also, Madam Chair. The report didn't specify that Director of Planning be authorized to ex-- sorry. Didn't authorize that the Director of Planning be authorized to execute the MOU. Could you add that recommendation as well?
Please add that as part of the record.
Okay.
Without objection. Okay, great. Why don't we jump back to Three, and then we'll do One and Two together?
Okay.
Item Three.
Item Number Three relates to Environmental Affairs Department Report relative to expanded local enforcement agency authorities. We have staff from EAD.
Good afternoon. Beth Jains with the Environment LA Department. I have with me Wayne Suda, who is the Director of the Compliance and Enforcement Division, which is responsible for two local enforcement agencies, the Sunshine Canyon LEA, as well as the Los Angeles City LEA. They permit and inspect and take enforcement actions against solid waste and certain recycling facilities. They operate under the authority and provisions of the California Waste Management Act and the Integrated Waste Management Board. Today, we're requesting revisions to the municipal code in response to a 2005 Councilmember Perry motion, requesting the City Attorney and the Environmental Affairs Department to modify the municipal code relative to local enforcement agency fees, new classifications, payment and non-payment of fees, and other related items to ensure sufficient resources for the LEA to carry out its responsibilities. And Wayne Suda will provide some details of our request.
Good afternoon, Wayne Suda, Environment LA. And one of the first things we did in terms of reviewing the ordinance was we know that some of the old sections of the ordinance were buried in the Public Works Code. It was even hard for us to find. So our learned colleague here, Mr. Pritzker, has helped us create a new chapter within the municipal code called Environmental Protection. So all of our sections have been moved to that new chapter, and future sections of code enforcement dealing with environmental matters could be used, or could be moved to that chapter as well. So we think it will simplify and make easier our operators finding code sections, as well as our own staff. So that was very helpful. Couple of the other specific things that we've asked for are permit revocation provisions for non-payment of fees. That was a recommendation from the Auditor Controller in a past audit. She felt, or their staff felt, that we needed the authority to suspend a permit for non-payment. We had no--
That would be the LEA?
Right, for the LEA fees, yes. We also increased the existing fees approximately 3 percent across the board. We have the authority to do that in a consumer price index formula. We created new categories for green waste processing and construction demolition and inert processing facilities. These are new classifications for the entire state. They went into effect in 2003, and we are currently processing permits for these types of facilities now. We have created new regulations at the local level for previously existing state regulations for waste collection vehicle yards. Waste collection vehicles, you know, are those vehicles that collect waste, but they all, the private and the public, publicly owned ones, park them in a yard somewhere. We inspect the yard because occasionally they get a little neglected. So, of course, not the city facilities, only the private ones. We are also asking for new enforcement authority for land use conditions of approval, and along with that, we're asking for citation authority, because of the nature of these types of violations--
Now, is that for LEA?
That's for LEA only.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. It can extend to certain industrial uses that are similar to solid waste facilities, but generally in keeping with our role. We are also asking for a couple of administrative matters to be considered. One is our LEA staff badge authority. When we started the program back in 1992, we did have badges, and shortly thereafter, there was a problem, and they were all recalled. And we are in the process now of trying to get those badges back after these many years.
Okay. What's the process that you have to go through to get those badges back?
We are, we need council approval, simply.
You probably have to go to personnel and go through the CAO and the CLA to make sure that there's a reason, there's a valid reason for getting those badges back.
Yeah, we will meet all of the elements of the badge ordinance.
And what was the problem before when you had badges? Why did they, why were they taken away?
Yeah, it had to do with misuse of a badge by a public official, who was not a, actually not a city employee.
Yeah, yeah, badges are always dicey things, yeah.
And the last item we're asking for is the use of our department's environmental trust fund for the receipt and dispersment of fees, program funds, fines, any other types of revenue to be used for LEA program purposes.
Now, I don't know if there's a process in place for that automatically, or would they need to go to Budget and Finance for approval on that?
Yeah, perhaps somebody might require that kind of review--
I mean, we can't just say, sure, that's a great idea.
Yes.
Yeah, you have to go to Budget and Finance for review on that.
Right, and we'll be working with the CAO on this as well.
Yeah, I need an analysis and a review from the CAO on that issue. And then I would recommend that, you know, you pass it through this committee, and then we forward it on to Budget and Finance for their review. Okay, great.
I have a question. Keith Pritzker, Deputy City Attorney. And obviously, I've been working with all the staff on the two MOUs you heard about, and there are, is, of course, an ordinance related to the things that Mr. Suda just enumerated, and three other ordinances that will be coming to council next Tuesday. And my procedural question is, and it certainly seems appropriate that we have all the necessary review, is how we would handle this particular LEA ordinance when it comes before council Tuesday? Would it be some kind of provisional approval pending further review by other council committees? Or it would simply be sent to the other council committees and then returned back to the full city council after that review?
I would just vote on what it is that is contained in the ordinance now, and if there's something, why would it have to be provisional?
Well, because you mentioned that with regard to funding, that you'd like Budget and Finance--
Is that in there now?
I believe we put that in the draft, in the draft ordinance, as well as the issue that related to badges, and you mentioned--
Well, the issue with respective badges, I'm reading that right here, and that is limited only to the LEA--
Correct.
And normally, a badge issue would be vetted through personnel, because it is somewhat of a personnel issue, too. I don't know. I'd have to get some determination from the CLA. I'm not even sure I can answer that right now, here on the spot. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Perhaps what the committee can do is adopt, or concur with the Renewal A Committee recommendations, which were to adopt the draft City Attorney ordinance, as had been previously negotiated, worked out. In terms of any additional provisions and so forth, we could have the departments, our department, CAO, personnel, report back on and consider amendments if need be.
Yeah, have you come back, say, before holiday?
And--
If you can.
Okay.
In relation to the Budget and Finance Committee reviewing just the funding, I mean, there's a CAO recommendation, but I may just waive that, because I don't assume we have to see it in Budget and Finance. It's just establishing the right accounts.
Yeah, yeah. Make sure the process is placed, and that, you know, if he wants to waive it at that point.
Yeah, well, he may. I can't speak for him, obviously. We could request if he wants to see that, but it's just establishing the accounts and how it's set up. That's all it is. So it's, but then again, there is some revenue stream there, too, so.
That's why I just want to protect yourselves. Make sure we've done the due diligence on it, and again, if you want to waive it--
Yeah, with adoption of the ordinance, there's a fee structure that's already in place. There may be a need, obviously, to modify it, so we anticipate the CAO report will, should address that at that point, so.
We have one other unresolved issue in terms of the city family and this particular ordinance, and that's whether the General Manager and Assistant General Manager of the Environmental Affairs Department are included in the category of peace officers, and my office is still looking at the legal implications of that.
Yeah, I want you to take a look at the legal implications. We're going to leave that. I'm going to recommend we not make that a part of the ordinance as it is--
It is not, it is not as it is currently drafted.
You know, let's see what your analysis shows, and then that's a separate piece. Again, we can go through the due diligence, have it go through personnel, come back to this committee. I'd probably prefer that it go to personnel first.
Well, I'd like it considered in a larger context, because I proposed to the department two years ago that we have some badge authorities and enforcement authorities for the entire department, and the department said, no, we don't need that authority. So the LA does need that authority, but as far as the rest of the department goes, you rejected it when I offered it to you two years ago, and suddenly now you want it just for a couple people, and I would ask why, just a couple?
Why, what changed?
Not the field people, because the field people are the ones that really need that authorities, more than administrative staff. So I'd like to do that in a larger context, and if you can articulate to me why you and the General Manager need it, and the rest of your staff who's out in the field doing the real work don't need it, which is what you told me two years ago, why all of a sudden now the change of heart for just two of you? Doesn't, it's not, it's not a sequential thought process?
Well, I wasn't here two years ago, so I can't talk to the decision that was made at that point, but it pretty much is just, it's consistency there. In Street Services, which has done a similar thing, the way that their ordinance reads is their General Manager and Assistant General Manager are included along with the staff. And in looking at that, I have, and that's where we've been with Keith, is it legally required or not? And that's the issue that we're still looking through, and there is some--
I'm not really sure it's necessary. I'd like to know the necessity of, why would that be necessary?
It has to--
The services people spend a lot of time out in the field, including their management staff, because I know we meet them out there a lot.
It has to do with the supervisory relationship.
But see, the supervisory relationship does not exist, because they're operating under state authorities as an LEA, not as EAD employees. They're operating as a state agency, not your employee. So while you have some authority over them, their operations to site are under a different authority that you don't have. You're not part of the LEA.
Well, in actual fact, though, Dee does sign off on all the permits, so she's part of our chain of command. And if she, and our General--
But she's--
Assistant General Manager has authority in case she's not available or--
I'd like to see what the attorney's analysis bears out. I couldn't act on this today, but--
Yeah, I'm not asking that. I was just raising it as an issue for discussion in the future. And like I said, my office has not finished its review of this question.
Great, okay. Any other items on this?
No, none of this. So concur with the Renewal A Committee recommendations with respect to LEA ordinance.
Okay, now, let's go to the two big items, One and Two. Can we take One and Two together?
Yes, yes, you can.
Okay, great.
They both relate to alternatives to landfill fee and fund, report from CAO, sanitation,
Good afternoon, Emilio Rodriguez, CAO's office. The proposed alternatives to landfilling fee provides for a dedicated investment in solid waste processing and recycling facilities, and programs that provide alternatives to a landfill disposal, particularly where green energy opportunities can be realized. The proposed fee would generate estimated revenue of 3.6 million annually, and that's based on the current disposal activity of approximately 6,500 tons per day at a Sunshine Canyon. Net revenue after recovery of the city's costs relative to certain landfill operating fees is approximately 934,000 to be used for alternative technology projects and programs. This amount could go up as capacity increases. As I understand, under the joint landfill operations, capacity could go up to just over 12,000 tons per day. Factory Nance Sunshine Canyon franchise fees of 1.9 million, a total of 2.8 million, projected to be available annually for alternative technology purposes. These revenues assume joint landfill operations between the city and county, as are currently being finalized. We support the ATL fee. The only difference between our recommendations and those of the Bureau and the Renew Committee, which was held yesterday on where proceeds should be placed, we had proposed proceeds be placed in the solid waste fee. Although the objectives of the new fee could be carried out with either option, either putting them into the solid waste fee or a new trust fund altogether.
Okay, great. Next?
Khalil Gario, Bureau of Sanitation Division Manager. I would like to reiterate what the Bureau's position with regard to the creation of the new fund. We do agree with the CAO's report with one consideration for the committee to consider to, not to deposit the revenue into the SWR fund, just to create the new ATL fund where the revenue both from the franchise fee and the alternative to landfilling fee would be deposited in that particular fund. Thank you.
That's okay.
No.
I do have one part of this. I think his name is David Howser or David Hansen. Howser? Couldn't read the writing.
Either of them.
Okay. Either way, you're from BFI.
As long as the check cashes, you don't care. Good afternoon, Committee Chair Perry and committee members. My name is David Howser. I'm the General Manager for Sunshine Canyon Landfill. Yesterday, before the Renewal A Committee, I briefly commented on this agenda item before you regarding the ATL fee for Sunshine Canyon. I just want to reiterate again that we oppose the fee, because we believe it is unfair, discriminatory, and illegal. We would like to enter a similar record, a letter that we entered in yesterday, just in for the record, and we urge the committee and council not to approve the fee. That's all, that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Christopher, do you have a comment on that letter?
I'm still consulting with my colleagues, but, you know, we believe that the fee is appropriate and legal. And I'll have more to say on that when the council takes up this matter next Tuesday.
Okay, great. Why don't you be prepared to give us something on the record? All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Howser.
Thank you.
Are there, this is, we're taking One and Two together again?
Yes.
Any comments or questions from colleagues? If not, Mr. Christopher?
I just, the recommendation of the Renew Committee yesterday was to go to the ATL fee, and the reason was just to keep a separation of those funds. I think it's a logical assumption. Two, the council's already passed the alternative technology proposal. We have an actual plant being proposed probably in March of next year. This will help fund that, and it's a wise decision to just keep those funds separated and for that purpose.
So that our recommendations to adopt the Renew--
Yes.
--recommendations?
Yeah, as right, right before you.
And we all do it?
Yeah, for both One and Two. They're all together.
One and Two together.
The City Attorney's still in a process of submitting their draft ordinances. They'll submit that, might request the committee, request waivers for those items when they come in. We expect tomorrow?
Yes.
So they can be heard in council on--
Yeah, so we can be, so we can hear them in council. Do you think you'd be ready by then?
Your, I was just waiting for management to announce.
Okay, okay, great.
I expect that to happen either at the end of the day or tomorrow.
Okay, great.
So all-- So all five are coming together?
Yes, all five of these items, and council on the 25th, next Tuesday.
Oh, good. Another long day.
All right. Thank you. All right, that completes our agenda. Any items that are not on the agenda, this is public comment period, so feel free to come forward and speak. Otherwise, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.